We'll get this big showing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation in the great invisible, the remit of the strong.
Alright. We have a motion to approve minutes.
I made a motion to approve minutes.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Brett will not be able to be here tonight. He's got his daughter's last soccer game. So, he's, I would go to that too if it was my daughter's. Not a big deal. Since you guys are all here, why don't we take you guys first? Whoever wants to go first? The Spectrum guys or?
I'm more than hungry if you guys reply out.
No, I've got that, yeah.
Okay.
Spectrum.
So we just, I know I was here earlier in the summer.
Right.
Talking about, you know, we're gonna come through and I don't know how many addresses it is, but we just need to know. I know Shauna.
Shauna.
Shauna. You know, she's like, hey, there's only down a permitting process. Just make sure you're sticking with wherever other utility already is, right?
Yeah. Hit different lines than what they hit.
Right, right. So, yeah, the email changes a couple of weeks ago, last week, a couple of weeks ago with her saying we need, we'll probably need to go on both sides of the street. And she was a little hesitant on that. I know she's not here, but, so that, that's one of our, I guess issues were asked is that they were gonna need to go on, on both sides of the street. The other main one would be the right of way. Is it gonna be mainly private property that we're gonna have to be going, going through? Again, if that is, what, what do we need to do to make sure that we're doing everything right by, by you guys?
Well, honestly, Shauna, it would be the one that, and since she's not here tonight, I really don't know how to answer that.
Yeah.
Either of those questions, really. Do you have any ideas?
I don't, I don't feel like it was much of a conversation when the other guys would come into town. Like, we just knew it was happening and we just kinda let them be until they hit a water line and then we had no knowledge on it.
We tried to avoid it all costs.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
I don't see any major problems with, whether it's private property or as long as if you go through private property and fix everything, you know.
Right, and obviously we'd have a conversation with, with the homeowners, like, oh, what we're gonna be doing and all of that and, and I think clearly fixing what they, they, you know, come up with.
And you have Shauna's home number.
Hundred percent, yeah.
And so I would just get with her.
Okay. Yeah, like, I mean, we, we had been, and she's like, hey, just come to the meeting, you know, on Tuesday. It's like, oh, okay, we'll be here and, and, okay, yeah, I just, you got anything?
So it looks like a majority of your existing infrastructure is backlot? Is that, you want us to stick to backlot? Because I see both backlot and front.
I would, yeah, I mean, whichever way you can go where would be the least intrusive, that the easiest you guys without having to.
Water and sewer, does USIC locate that for you or do you have a private location?
No, no, we just go through.
USIC locates?
And that's another thing, Shauna. We'll be able to answer pretty easily, but, yeah, we, we generally just contract that out to what used to be, you know, the old bayboard line.
Yeah.
And your workers all have badges and stuff and, like, because I'm being, I'm coming from the little old lady perspective of just making sure that you guys can identify yourselves.
They all have signs on the car where, where Spectrum, it'll be sunrise, it'll be, it'll be us.
Okay, yeah.
We'll probably put something on the community page too, just to let people know that it's happening.
Because, you know, we don't, we don't need that on the community page.
It'll end up on the community page.
That's right.
Yeah, we'll, we'll leave you, or, I mean, you have my kind of information, but I'll have them leave, leave there so that if there are questions or things pops up, contact me.
Yeah.
Or, or one of the team members here.
So what are you guys planning on starting? Do you have a plan, starting date?
Not yet.
Okay.
We're getting really close. We'll be doing the transport here within the next week or so.
Okay.
And we've already issued that out. The rest of it's kind of within the next two months, probably.
Yeah, and let me just, a lot of those locates are just like general suggestions. Some of them are not real active.
Which is why we have.
So that's gonna be my question to you. I understand like all utilities makes complete sense. I don't know how many utilities you have going through the town. I'm worried about the telephone or anything. So, when they were talking about going the opposite side of the road, sometimes because there's so much on this one side, it makes more sense for us to just be completely on the opposite side.
And like I say, whichever works out easier for you.
Just to avoid.
Have locate wherever you wanna go, just so, you know.
Okay.
Hopefully they, they're within that.
Is there a reference on the pedestals that stick up above ground or do you want it all flush mouthed?
I like flush mouthed, just because less, less chance of somebody running in.
We got a lot of trees falling down here lately.
Is that all you needed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just keep it posted on the dates and we'll start talking about it.
Shauna do that? She give us something right and says we've got permission pretty much.
Yeah, um, talk to Shauna if she didn't want to, I'll do it.
Okay.
Perfect, I'd rather she do it. She doesn't mind.
She's our expert.
Yeah.
Hopefully, this will be the most difficult thing you guys do all day.
Well, I was working on drywall all day, so.
I mean, I mean, so far it's now, I can't help you on the drywall.
It's for my daughter, so, yeah, it's for me. Okay. Would you guys like to pick the floor?
So, thanks guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I brought, I'm Jill Curry.
Hi, Jill Curry. I try to stay quiet in the emails because you guys are smarter than me.
No, no. So, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too, Jill.
And I've got Travis Curry here as well. So, we are, we're actually married, so, for better, for worse. So, Travis was here with the team doing smoke testing in July, right, July?
Yes.
And, so this math you've got in front of you is, are the results of the smoke testing. With the legend at the bottom showing what we're finding. So, as you all know, we're going through our compliance plan with IDEM. And in particular, I do think you had an inspection in the last couple of weeks, which wasn't great. They noted that there's been some overflows at the lift station, that we need to continue to work on our alarming options for basically letting Dallas be able to remotely check and see how the flows are going if the, the lift station is getting close to being overwhelmed with water during those rain events. Yeah. So, let me start with the alarming options. I was hoping I was gonna come tonight with the quotes for what that might cost. We have two companies, there's two providers in, that we typically see most utilities work with. One is called an Omni site and one is called a mission control panel. One of them is provided by BL Anderson, who is already a supplier that supplies equipment at your wastewater treatment plant. So Dave came out last week with Travis and looked and he was on vacation now, so he hadn't been able to get us a quote yet. So I'm hoping for your next council meeting, I'll have a quote from BL Anderson. And because they're most familiar with your system, I'm just guessing it's gonna be a slightly lower quote. We do have some general numbers from another supplier that provides these Omni site options. And I don't, we'll get a firm quote for you next month, but generally speaking, just to give you a range of things to prepare for, I think for the Omni site, the cost to initial setup and install is gonna be eighty-five hundred, probably ten thousand five hundred dollars, somewhere in that range. That would include both putting remote, it's called remote monitoring is what we call it. IDEM calls it alarming options, kind of letting your phone go off, letting you know what problems you're having. Remote monitoring, this would include both the treatment plant plus the lift station. Theoretically, IDEM didn't say you had to do it at the lift station, but that now recently with their inspection report, they noted that there was some overflows happening. So I think we need to anticipate that that will be part of what they would want you to do is have it up both the lift station and the main lift station. So eighty-five hundred, I'm gonna say ten thousand five hundred. I'm hoping that the BL Anderson is less than that. But then the other big item is that annually, there's a annual, because you have to have, basically, a data plan with this, that probably less, hopefully less than, but at most nine hundred dollars a year. So, which is another cost for your wastewater utility. And I don't know how, you know, that would incorporate into your annual budget you already have based on user rates. If I just do the simple math, you only have eighty-eight wastewater customers, an extra nine hundred dollars a year, it's gonna be an extra, you know, dollar a month, basically, for every customer to be able to support this monitoring that IDEM requires you to have. So, I will come next month hopefully with better numbers for you, but just to get it in your head so you can kind of go look at your budget, see what you think you can afford next month, we can talk about it. IDEM does want you to try and have it in here before the end of the year installed. So that, install, if possible. Now, if, if supply chain or some of that is an issue, all we have to do is just tell IDEM, you know, we've all got it on order, it's just not installed yet. They'll understand that there's been some delay, so.
So then, once we decide, like, next month, then we'll do the ordering?
Yes, yes, yeah. I would bring probably two quotes for you to sort of, and you would sort of determine which quote and then you can start getting it on order. One thing BL Anderson's looking at, I think they think they can just install it themselves, right? Is what he was thinking?
Okay. They, they spoke about this.
Yeah, Dave's worked with Dallas Law and even I think the electrician, you guys, so, but he came out and looked at it. I'm hoping his quote is pretty good, tight, so.
Okay.
And then the other supplier wasn't sure if they could install it themselves or if they needed electrician. So that's why in that price, the equipment we thought was only like four thousand, but then we put an extra four thousand in just for, and then an extra five hundred in case we need an antenna. So I bumped those numbers up a little bit just to cover, so those numbers are like top high end, we're trying to. I'm hoping it'll be like four grand, but I'm giving you the high numbers based on the equipment we sell, okay? So that is number one for next month, what we'll go through. On our compliance plan with IDEM, we told them we would have smoke testing and manhole inspections done by the end of this month. Smoke testing is done, as you can see. Travis has over half the manholes inspected. We're gonna try and finish up any additional manhole inspections we think we need. The big reason we've done the smoke testing and manhole inspections is because when, every time it rains, you're, on a normal average dry day, your wastewater lagoons are handling your wastewater just fine. But what happens when it rains, suddenly the flows to the plant spike significantly. And the lagoons then cannot handle treating the wastewater appropriately. So then, when we're trying to discharge wastewater, we are not meeting our environmental limits that IDEM has put on the wastewater system. Why is the level sp- spiking during a rain event? It's very common, couple reasons, we think. Number one, there is these open areas where water is getting in. Some people have their gutters connected, they're, they're, literally their gutters on their house are going straight into the wastewater system, which is stormwater that's going straight into the wastewater system. There's some that have cleanout caps that are missing, some little issues. There are, you'll see some manholes in town where your manhole cover itself has holes in it. So when it rains, water is getting in on those manholes. So there's a couple ways, really one way that's the least expensive. They have these dishes, I call them a dish. It's literally a.
Plastic.
Plastic hat, circle, dish, like a bowl.
Like a bowl. But you literally sit underneath the manhole cover, it sits in, on the top of the manhole and it catches that water and keeps it from going down into the manhole and into the wastewater system. So you can see you all have, I didn't count, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen of your thirty-ish manholes, almost, not half of them, but have these open pickholes. So I will try and get a price for you for these plastic dishes. And I think that would be one way we could show IDEM, okay, we've realized we have open pickholes, we can start. So now, how much wastewater is really getting in some of these manholes? You know, we'll probably recommend specifically which ones we know should have it, if they're sitting in lower lying areas. There may be somewhere, it's only if a raindrop happens to fall in that hole, because there's not really water sitting around it, but, so we'll try and recommend how many we think you should buy, where you should install them. Well, but that's one thing we can try and prove to IDEM. Also, I, the letter I gave you, I gave you a sample letter there. Where you see other items on this key, there's two blue dots where either somebody is missing, has an issue at their cleanout, or we noticed that in their, in the ground on their property or around their house, they might have a lateral that hat is broken, which means wastewater, stormwater is getting into that wastewater pipe. So we are proposing sending this letter and I would probably, Conrad, you or Jess, have you guys mail it if you're okay with that. There's only about eleven of them, there's not a lot of them. And I could, we could get you these letters so you could get them out in the mail. And basically what the letter says, it's to the property owner and it says, "Action required. We observed smoke escaping from XYZ." In this case, it was a broken cleanout cap during our smoke testing. And it explains a little bit about what the common issues are. And on the back of the letter, it explains how it can be prevented and fixed. So how to replace the cleanout cap or how to get a plumber there to potentially diagnose a lateral issue. And then it's saying that we require you to remedy the identified deficiencies within ninety days. Now, if they need a little bit longer, we can work with them. Some people, one of your buildings in town is a larger commercial building, has all of its gutters, it appears to be connected. So that one may take them a little bit longer, but by December fifteenth is when we'd like these issues resolved. Now, we want them also to report to you when they complete the repairs. So I don't know how you want them to report to you. That's my first question is, how would you like them to report to you? I put the town's phone number, is that the town's phone number, number one?
That's right.
It's the right phone number, okay. Number one, you gotta make sure you got the right number in there. I don't know if you wanna put someone's email in there that they could report to or just put the phone number. I can just do the phone number too, if you would like.
What, and if we send that to you?
And then that homeowner would just call in and say, hey, I'm calling to tell you I have resolved, I've put a new cleanout cap on my cleanout, or I've resolved my issue.
But do you need to know that too so that we can report that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll follow up with you guys and just make sure people have called in and fixed those issues, yeah. Yeah.
So, I'm just gonna say something.
Go ahead.
I'm a very literal person and if I got this, thank God my husband handles this type of stuff, but if I got this, it doesn't, it looks like a flyer to me. It doesn't look like an important letter.
Okay.
And I don't know what it is that it's missing. I don't know if the action required needs to be first.
Okay.
The town at Centerpoint, action required and then do everything?
Yes.
I don't know that I would be reading this. However, I'm not a boy and I wouldn't look, I'd look at the smoke coming out of the ground and look at the pretty weeds, so, I don't know, like, I don't know. I don't know. Like I said, I'm not responsible for this type of stuff. What do you guys think? Like, if you got this in the mail, would you?
We do, but I don't think it would really.
Say that again?
They asked if we had letterhead.
Official letterhead. If you did have official letterhead, I would love that. That's what I would love.
I mean, I don't really see anything wrong with the form of it. But you're right, you, you aren't gonna have to redo the thing from start to finish, you're right. And we wanted to take it seriously.
Yeah.
So maybe we should put something on the town page too. Or I should.
Well, probably certain people are gonna, it's kind of, we're kind of scolding certain people.
And say if you receive, if you receive a letter.
And have any questions?
And have any questions, Paul, because it's something we have to take care of.
Yes, okay.
So I mean, we can, I can move the action required or I can put in red, I can put in red diagonal, action required somewhere else even to call out, like, yeah. We can.
My, my.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
It doesn't, I don't feel like I'm in trouble with this. I don't feel like there's anything, there's no sense of urgency with this if it were just for me. If this was work, I would put it in a file like it to a.
Yeah, I'll say, please read the entire letter.
Yes. I'm not trying to be critical, I just wanna.
Oh, that's, that's good.
Yeah, no, I, trust me. So.
I definitely think including an email. I mean, I can't speak for Brett that he's okay with having his email on there.
Yeah.
I mean, we could put the town's email.
What, what is the town's email?
Uh, it is TMofCenterPoint@frontier.com.
I could call Brett's night and say, hey, by the way, you're gonna be getting a lot of.
It probably would. No, I'll just put the town's general email on there.
That'd be good.
Yes, yes. No, I, I, I wasn't sure what people prefer, so, no. Yeah, yes. So with, when we send you the letters, and I will send you the letters so you can just drop them in the mail, I, I might see if you can email me your letterhead or if you want.
Yeah, I don't know if I have, it's just, it's old, it's old letterhead. Yeah, it's, it's paper.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Okay, well, maybe I'll get one before I leave from you or something, if you have one and I can try and snip it and put it in the letter.
Yeah, I mean, there's not much to it, so.
Okay, or I can, I can fancy it up.
I'll just, I'll grab one right now.
I like that you include a picture of the individual problems too, I think that'll.
Yes, I like that. I, I like it, I just, I don't know what I'm on, but I don't take care of this, so.
I'll see what we can do to put like action required up towards the top somewhere. That way, yeah, it's more, it stands out a little bit more for you, so.
We'll, yeah, I'm sure it's fine, I just.
See if you can trickle it out.
Oh, my life.
Oh, okay. No, but I will, I'll use this.
Okay. I, I don't know how old it is, but.
So, no, I will use that and we'll get that.
If it's watermark, is it watermark? Is it like official looking? Is it pretty paper, cotton paper? I mean, that's just regular little paper.
A lot of people, it's just, it's just something you put in a work document, so.
Yeah, that's crazy.
But I can get it, yeah. Or recreate it even, yeah.
Well, I mean, you kind of did.
Yeah.
I don't think there's much, maybe put the email up there too.
Yeah, so, okay.
Two points of reference for it.
Okay.
Okay.
So we will get these letters, send a package to you guys so you can, and we'll press, send mailing labels and so you can package it up and send it out from town here. And then in that, I'll have the checklist of who you should hear back from, expect to hear back from. So you'll see Travis's information as well, if he got questions, then call Travis.
Okay.
About any other issues, okay? So that was part of our list that IDEM, we, last month, basically what I did in our last report to IDEM was I said, hey, we'd like a little more time to finish our study. But in the meantime, we're gonna try and address some of this low hanging fruit of this water that's getting into the system. And honestly, if we keep finding more things to do, I'm gonna keep probably seeing what we can do as far as IDEM to continue to try and address issues that we can't address on our own with less expense before we look at spending major dollars, you know? But there may be a point where we can't get all the water out of the system and, so, so we'll continue to work on these items. The last thing that we added, and I think we've talked to the, you know, Roy before he passed away, we talked to Dallas, there is a big suspicion that part of the flow getting into the system is sump pumps. People with sump pumps in their homes and their sump pump discharges basically to their sewer lateral, to the sewer system. And that's very difficult to know where those are happening because they're inside people's homes. So I brought, so one thing I put in our communication with IDEM is that you guys as a council can consider revising your sewer ordinance and I don't, I need to probably at some point see if you can email me a copy of your current sewer ordinance, because I don't know if it says anything about sump pumps. I don't know if it says anything about, so two things that I know communities around Indiana have done to address sump pumps is, I brought two examples from two other ordinances, or one is actually a, a, one, an ordinance that I have as a template because it's one that a couple other towns have adopted. So, the, the first one I gave you on top that looks like this, this is a town, a city that essentially went a whole, this wouldn't be something that would be a short-term fix, but over the long term, as homes are sold or change hands, you guys would have the authority to do a lateral and a sump pump check at that house before it switches ownership. So before that new customer, it basically they switch the customer billing name or there's suddenly a switch in the billing name, you guys would have the authority to say, hey, we're gonna come check, make sure your lateral and your sump pump are in accordance with our, our requirements. And basically it allows you to make sure that they aren't connecting anything illegally, like a sump pump to pump stormwater into the sewer system, okay? So I know that's a long, this is a very long-term one and this is something you could talk to your attorney about adding to your.
Question on this.
Go ahead.
So if somebody is doing a rental, it says more change in water billing, so if the name changes, we can go in to tenants as well and get them.
Yes, and that, yes, yes.
And there's no penalty to the person that had it prior to this? It's just moving forward, we're gonna make changes?
Moving forward, yeah, yeah, moving forward.
If you find out that it's going into the sewage line, do we pay to fix it then?
No, they would be required to because part of your ordinance is this part in IDEM section twelve here in this other ordinance. So again, you may have something similar to this already in your ordinance, I just don't have a copy of it and I don't know if you have a copy of it. It's probably in the depths of your documents somewhere. So, and I can send you this whole ordinance, I can send it to Scott if you want me to send it to Scott, who's, I think, serving as your attorney now. I mean, you guys let me know what you would like me to do. But this section twelve here is very clear that no person, no person shall make connection of roof downspouts, exterior foundation drains, areaway drains, or other surface runoff groundwater or uncontaminated cooling water to a building sewer or building drain, including any stormwater sump pumps. So they cannot connect stormwater sump pumps. Persons who connect such facilities to the sewer system shall be responsible for properly disconnecting the same upon notification of the superintendent. So in that case, your contract operator or your persons in violation of this chapter shall be subject to penalties as defined herein. Stormwater and all other unpolluted drains shall be discharged to sewers specifically designated as storm sewers or to a natural outlet approved by the town, basically. So, which can just be out on the ground. And so I know, you know, long-term, I'm sure there's some stormwater projects the town wants to continue to pursue as well, but these, so what I would propose within the next several months as well is we also send, if we revise our ordinance, we send a blanket letter to all customers, letting them know the town is facing major compliance issues with our wastewater system. We cannot have sump pumps connected, we cannot. We are gonna, A, be changing our ordinance so that anytime there's a billing change, we are allowed to inspect your lateral, including where it enters your home and where a sump pump could be located. And then also to say that we are, you know, I think we need to at some point send a blanket letter to all customers, because the best way we can get stormwater off the system is to do the smoke testing. Some of it could be coming in with your lines, your sewer lines in town, but from what I understand, you've had some lining in the system over the years. When that lining was done, when they went in to cut holes where there's sewer laterals, they just cut every hole they think they, they thought they needed to cut, which means they could have been cutting all these sump pump cross connections or sewer, the other stormwater cross connections. So what happens is when you line the pipe, you're supposed to line it to keep out any stormwater that doesn't need to get in. But what Roy told me is, he suspects that back when they did that twenty, ten, twenty years ago, they may have not, it might not be as closed off as it initially was because they inadvertently cut some of these cross connections back into the system, which is why sump pumps just need to be able to get off the system. And I think from that, we can see if it's helping your flows at all and we can kind of work with IDEM to see if it's helping before we jump too far into a major construction project of either collections of summer wastewater.
Makes sense.
So, so I don't know if you want me to, if you wanna send this, you want me to send it to your, I don't, I don't know if it's Scott, you want me to send it to.
And it needs to get to ours to compare some of it.
Yes, so I don't know if you or Jess can dig around and see what you can find.
Jessica probably knows it.
Okay.
And then, I mean, it would be a lot better if it's Scott's, I think that'd be one of ours.
Yes. Yeah.
You're gonna be busy with us too, I have a feeling. We have to enforce these inspections.
Yes, and, and so I think Travis would like try, try to, try to clarify for people any questions they have. It, it will probably need to be for the inspection part. It, it will probably need to be, for the inspection part over the years, it will probably need to be, either you guys have a plumber, who you either include it in your, um, somehow if you have a bill, I mean, you might be able to just have a twenty-five, fifty dollar billing charge, and, I don't know, have a, or a hundred dollars, and have a. Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know.
Or, yeah, or, or see, see if you can include it in your contract with Dallas or somebody to, to be able to just, you know, have that part of your contract with them, that they could come do the inspections quick.
Sure.
And make sure, yeah.
Well, this is, this is completely, oh, I live at three thirteen Williams.
Oh, okay.
Station, and when it rains, it comes from every direction.
Yes.
And multiple little streams that it created in the years, that literally are ruining our yard.
Yes.
Bad.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and so I think.
That's just the storm water, that's not.
Yeah. But that's.
Then it goes in there, and it backs it up, and then we get down sandhells, so.
Yeah. And that's part of the problem too, is the storm events we have now aren't like the storm events we used to have. The storm events we have now are harder and stronger and heavier than we've had when we have one, and it just water stands for time, but it, so I think a lot of wastewater utilities across the state are trying to figure out how to manage over time. Um, you know, we don't want you to have to build a whole new treatment plant, that's what we're trying to avoid. We're trying to get some of this low hanging fruit, if we can. Um, like I said at the last meeting, there are some current concerns with lagoon. I think muskrats have essentially dug holes through the middle of the dike, as old as it is. So, there's, and it's very expensive to fix something like that. So we're gonna be weighing as we finish recommendations, what's the cost of just trying to keep the lagoons going versus other options?
Probably something, but if you get to that, our only core engineers has to come in.
Well, that's kind of a dike on a lagoon, it's not really part of the public waterway necessarily. So, but, doesn't mean it's gonna be cheap. I mean, so we talked today about your project with some of our other engineers, and even wastewater lagoon liners are almost as expensive as doing a whole mechanical plant. It's, it's, it's just so, but we are, so if you see on your compliance plan, um, that we gave out last month, we're, the rest of this year, we're continuing to assess alternatives, cost estimates, and hopefully, you know, end of the year, January, we'll come with some options, depending on, and then we'll continue to try and reduce some of this other flow in the meantime, and address some of it.
Okay.
So next month, we will have another update due to I D M, so I'll bring that next month, and we'll follow up on some of these other items.
I'll show you everything, you guys.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yes, yes, absolutely, so, you'll see Travis back, probably do some more field work, and then we'll see you next month.
All right, thanks.
All right.
It was nice to meet you.
Yes, nice to meet you too. Yes, yes.
Does anybody have any questions for Zilmer? All right, moving on. Our next big fun thing is the water rate increase, which we did hear from the attorney. And with everything they have been doing with other entities, it looks like we're going to increase two dollars and fifteen cents per thousand gallons for the inside of town. Which would be, first seven thousand is gonna be seventeen dollars and fifteen cents more for in, in town, and nineteen dollars and sixty-four cents for seven thousand gallons. I don't know how many people use seven thousand gallons. I know people are gonna really be unhappy with this, and we're gonna probably hear a lot about it, but our hands are really tied on this thing, there's really nothing we can do when Brazil raises their rates.
Forty-eight percent.
Forty-eight percent. I mean, it puts us in an unenviable position, have to try and ease the pain as much as we can, but we gotta do it. And I, actually, the water is about the only thing we ever make any money at all on. We got the new sewer adjustment, uh, figures, and it sounds like we're keeping our heads above water with the sewer, but we're not adding enough that we could, like, do little incidental things now, that soon as it's treated. So, I mean, it doesn't sound like a whole lot, but for some people, that's gonna be an inconvenience, and I hate it, but.
Man, I don't get three hundred dollars.
Yeah.
I can help, I'm pretty thoughtful.
Right, well, we use a bunch of my white water is almost flowers, she has. We chuff up a bunch of the summer time from there, but.
Well, you have to make a motion to.
Yeah, and when we do that, we need to make a motion, and either accept it or not, with the addendum of making sure that it's okay we did that without a public hearing.
Oh.
We sorta do, and sorta don't.
I mean, it sounded like we didn't.
I, I feel like we've already done that.
Because it was, yeah.
It's already written in.
Yeah, yeah, since we had that addendum in the original rate increase, which we had a public hearing.
Right, I, I thought that's how it was, that we now.
I agree, I agree. I just think that just from what I, Scott's saying.
Yeah, I mean, I would feel better if you was here.
Do you wanna wait till next?
I mean.
I think we oughta go ahead and approve it.
Basically, yeah, I mean, and I mean, it's not a big difference, but I mean, we're, you know, every month that we're putting this off, we're paying more for our water, and not, you know, more money, more money is all coming in.
So I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the new water rate increase for the town.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Megan, you're gonna probably have a lot of fun with this down the road too, if you, if you stay with us.
Yeah, well, I think Jessica's really gonna be the one that feels most.
Yeah, I guess.
Part of it, but. Well, I mean, the impact, like, uh, what like the regular Center Point customer, will that be, I mean, are people gonna get their bills and just like, oh, this is the big one, or what? It's not ten or twenty bucks, huh?
It'll, well, if you use up to seven thousand gallons a month, which I don't think a lot of people do, you'd have, you'd pay an extra seventeen dollars a month.
It, it's gonna be noticeable, because our bills are so low already, so you're gonna notice it, because it's low. But if we were like everybody else, you probably wouldn't even know it's happening.
Yeah, when I moved here, it was twenty-three dollars a month.
Yes, but it's still.
Really?
Is it a hundred now, or is it a hundred?
Hundred and thirteen for water and sewers, the minimum.
We're gonna notice it, it's just, but it's not.
So I mean, some people will look at it and say, oh, my water goes a little more, and other people will be like, it's the big one. Yeah, so, it's just a lot of relative.
Yeah, I think it was ten. Oh, I believe you.
I believe you, yeah.
It was forty, what was it? No, it was forty.
Yeah, yeah.
Every single month since we lived here, you know, back up to actual town, ours, every single month, I think, required a couple dollars. And the only reason that I know that is because I write the checks for it, but Peyton has to go out and do. Laundry, the kids take a bath, the dogs take baths, they shower. Yeah, ours has already went up, like, I don't know, I feel like it's gonna be whoever writes the checks for your home, it's gonna be a one.
Definitely, yeah. So, we'll just deal with it as the complaints come in. All right, sidewalks, um, we'll table that till next month, because I will be able to get to the sidewalks till next month anyway. The pizza restaurant, I, uh, have talked to the lawyer about it, but he doesn't really know all the details, because I don't know all the details about everything, so, hopefully, between the lawyer and me and Tracy, we can get something figured about, out, about what to do, what to move forward. I don't know about Charity, if she's interested in it anymore, and what's your residency?
Kelly.
Uh, Kelly.
Kelly. So anyway, we're just gonna try to inch along on that, see if we can find some kind of resolution. Uh, Brett Credit Cardo, would you get anywhere with that?
Yeah, I, it, this month.
Okay. Any other old business? Let's do the sheriff's report.
Sheriff's report, I'm down.
Okay, all right. Oh, we have the Andrew Marsh, Marshall report. Yeah, I notice we have some new people moving in over here at the.
Trailer park?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're, they all look to be early twenties, and they just are, really truly, it looks like they're just having fires, riding dirt bikes, probably doing some illegal stuff, but they're at least staying and being quiet. They're right up to the road, they're not trying to hide any, they're just having fires. Has, has anybody noticed that? Like, I drive by, and there's like ten, twenty-some year olds sitting around a cane fire. At the trailer park going on forty-two, out of town.
Just past the curb.
Could it potentially be an issue down the road? But I don't see that they're doing anything.
I'm, it's, it's been a problem for fifty years, so, I, I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's gonna go away.
I just, yeah.
Okay, uh, you wanna talk about the?
Yes, uh, so Megan and I met, I don't know, was that last week?
Yeah.
Um, so she's agreed to come on as deputy clerk, I don't know if we need a motion for that.
I think we need to make sure we need her paid.
Okay, so, a motion, because there's a, I think it's like twenty-five dollars, I don't know, it's on our.
Yeah, because I think we talked about.
Yeah, I thought we made the motion already, but I'll make another motion to bring Megan on as a deputy clerk.
And I said. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, babe.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
So, yeah, we're gonna do that for a little while, get her transitioned, and the plan is right now to her, get things ready for the meeting, and then hopefully I can get caught up on everything else, and then see how that goes, and then.
So you have kind of an idea of when the transition's gonna take place?
I mean, I just, um, think that, you know, she needs to get a, be around it a little bit more.
You just need stress relief.
Yeah, I mean, just, yeah, I mean, if she could.
I think it'll just be a natural, like, you're gonna, you're getting caught up.
Yeah.
Yes, right, yeah.
Yeah.
And then when you two are ready to put a time, a resignation time on it, then I feel like, I mean, like, I don't feel like we need to rush anything, because.
Yeah, if I.
Because both of you need to be just.
Yeah. Yeah, I need to get caught up on everything.
Like, I'm not gonna say anything.
Uh, and then, once we do that, and then if she is, you know, still interested.
Where are we on that new software too?
Uh, no, update on that.
Okay.
But it's gonna happen one of these days.
Yeah, and she's young enough, she can pick her right up.
Yeah.
So I told him, I was like, I feel like it'll take you a second, it'll be a step back, because you'll have to take time to learn it, but then it'll be better.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
It'd be way better.
Have your, one of your children teach you, because they know every, like, seriously, they can pick up a phone and do anything.
Oh, my gosh, yeah. Okay, I got the report of the street light that's out, I'll take care of that. Uh, any other new business?
They were very strange, Ohio things. We're pouring on the whole high, you didn't see it in my time. All the planes coming out, going out.
Yeah.
Oh, what is this, the streets of Ohio in what?
By the old train roll.
Yeah, somebody, I think they put something on the town.
They did, about trying to find somebody to.
I saw, I saw a trailer truck there, like, two days ago.
I saw that too.
Maybe, maybe they're taking care of it.
Yeah.
It's the same thing with this house over here.
And that, now, now they're.
They have reached out to everybody.
South Horn Harmaning, yeah, now, that one gets grown hard.
Yeah.
That one is here, it, it makes you swing out for some weird reason, and then if somebody's coming at you, you're like, heading straight towards their grill.
Well, myself, I'm playing one of their, cutting down the.
And that tractor, I didn't see it, so I don't know.
Yeah, and that's the problem with those big weeds, I mean, you have to pull out far enough that you're in the road, to be able to see around it. Well, we'll see if we can get, I mean, like I said, we'll cut down some of them.
There's property owner too, you gotta be careful with.
Yeah.
It's not their own, or really, it already done that or not?
They should be.
Yeah, there is. Yeah, but, the thing about this over here, all that is right in the right of way of the road. So that's kind of a deal where, is it their problem, or is it the town's problem? I mean, if we had the money, I'd just say, get somebody, come in here and tell the police.
You could ask one to do the little.
Yeah.
Thing.
Which we may have to.
Shave the.
May have to invite bullet, take board out of water.
I say, let's, let's increase those rates, start shopping.
Well, does anybody have anything else they really wanna talk about tonight? Do you need to talk to me F words, or?
Yeah, well.
Okay. All right.
You're not resigning, are you? Okay. And then the September sixteenth meeting is definitely on the books.
It's six o'clock then.
Special meeting for public hearing, sixteenth.
So then, are those all okay? You like those?
I make a motion to accept the vouchers.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just real short to approve the budget.
Um.
Yeah.
And it is open to the public, but.
Yeah.
We're gonna literally be here for four minutes.
Yeah. Yeah, because everything's already been approved, we just need to sign it, so.
Thank you. I make a motion to adjourn.
I second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're officially done.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks for coming, everybody.
Thank crap.
Yeah.
We have no line.
There's nothing absolutely.
Be for yourself, this is the way I get out of the house.
You don't think this, you don't think this is entertaining?
Peyton and I.